There's agendas out.
There's a mailbox right up on the top.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, September ninth, two thousand and nineteen. I call the meeting to order. First item of business is to review the agenda.
The move to approve is presented.
Jeff has moved Santos as second. Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item three is to receive comments from the public, any members of the public wanting to address the board on a subject that is not already on our agenda. And I think we've got a lot of folks here. I'll let you know that item number six on our agenda is already to deal with Mr. Gertz's request, so that's on the agenda. Anyone else wishing to comment on anything else not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four. Discussion and possible action to approve claims dated September ninth, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Scott has moved Santos as seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number five, we have a presentation on the most recent Muscatine County Health Needs Assessment with our Director of Public Health, Kristy Robey-Williams. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. So I'm here to share with you what the Community Health Needs Assessment is, why we do it, and the work that is being done throughout our county. And this is done on your behalf and the Muscatine County Board of Health and the hospitals. So what is a Community Health Needs Assessment? It's a way to collect and analyze data to look at what the health concerns and/or strengths are in a county. It is, and then once that is done, the community determines what the priorities are, and then a community health improvement plan is developed. And then we, and you, and all community leaders strive to keep working on the health improvement priorities of the county. Why do we do it? Obviously, one of our main focuses as a public health department is to improve the health, status, life expectancy and span, and quality of life for our residents, to try and reduce health disparities amongst our residents, so create more health equity, and to increase accessibility to preventable services for all of our residents in our county. So, and to go back to the why and the what, the boards of health throughout all states, throughout the United States, are required to do health needs assessments every five years. That's the rotation typically of public health departments and our county boards of health. Hospitals, due to the Accountable Care Act requirements, are supposed to do them every three years. So we just go in collaboration, since we are part of and subcontract, you subcontract with our local hospital, we just rotate every three years. So we do it more frequently than what is required of us. And in doing this, you'll see, we focused in on two priorities this year, so we could have a stronger impact on the high needs in our county. So this year, in two thousand and eighteen, we completed a Community Health Needs Assessment in a collaborative approach. We did it as part of the Unity Point Health Trinity Regional Health System. They have worked with a professional research consultants company who does research with validity and statistical significance. And so we utilized this company in partnership with our region, our healthcare region, to complete this Health Needs Assessment in two thousand and eighteen. And so the outcomes from that, there were thirteen areas of opportunity based on that collective data assessment from professional research consultants for our area. As you can see, there's quite a few. And I will share with you, these were presented at a community event in October of two thousand and eighteen, and our community chose through strategic planning what the top two priorities were that we want to work on and have an impact on in two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one. We also did local quality findings through focus group questionnaires that I provided to different populations throughout our county. Top five needs identified really align and are similar to what professional research consultants found with mental health, alcohol, drug abuse, obesity, weight, diabetes, and affordable housing as needs. So as I mentioned, in October, there were two meetings held in community. With community, all community opened to public. Everyone was invited to attend. All of those thirteen needs were identified, presented with all of the data from professional research consultants. Everybody got their two cents or two stickies, but they got to go up and vote and determine what they felt was the highest need in our county from all thirteen of those. I will tell you, the top three were mental health, which was on our last needs assessment, substance abuse, and then the prevalence of diabetes. And so we chose, again, to select the top two, but that does not negate the work that we need to do also on obesity and diabetes prevalence. So the first priority, as I mentioned, is mental health, and the goal is to improve access to mental health services. The objective is obviously is to increase the ability to identify and access community health services by December of two thousand and twenty-one. And we have several indicators, and we have strategies, which I believe are in your packets, that identify the work that we will be doing. You can read this Health Needs Assessment and Health Improvement Plan is in a couple different places. If you just Google Trinity Muscatine Public Health, you'll get to our website, and they'll be off to the right-hand side. If you go to the Muscatine County Board of Health website, they're also both on there. So if you love to dive into data and make sure the methodology was correct, and you know what the statistical significance is, all of that information is there. And the second priority being substance abuse and reducing substance abuse to safeguard the well-being of children and adults. I will tell you that forty-five percent of our county residents reported that their lives are being negatively impacted by the use of a substance, both alcohol and illicit drugs. So this is a large impact to our county residents. And these are adults who are answering these questions. So there are a lot of strategies and focus on, yes, prevention and educating youth and adolescents and parents, but we also have some strategies where we're trying to create some awareness and impact on adults in our county. Again, I mentioned, yes, the top two priorities are mental health and substance abuse, but we are all tasked to look at all of these individually. And we ask that community members and leaders and individual citizens, look at the needs identified in our county. And if you choose to make an impact on community, look at this Health Needs Assessment and select one of these. Also, in your packet, you have, for Board of Supervisors, two executive summaries. So it shows you year-to-date, completed it in August. You'll see an executive summary on the mental health priority. It looks like this. They're the last two in your packet, and substance use. So I won't go through that because there's a lot of detail, and there's a lot of work being done already in the county. Any questions? It's a lot of information in a quick snippet. I did also put my business part on there. Public Health has a lot of services. We have over forty different services in a small, little building at sixteen oh nine Cedar Street. A lot of folks don't realize what we do. I did not realize what we did until I got inside those doors six years ago and became my career. It is amazing, and all of the services. So my business part is on there. As Board of Supervisors, these are services that you are required to fulfill and provide to the county. And so I would love to sit and visit with you over coffee, come to Public Health, get a tour, learn about all of the multiple different services and how we are serving the county. I'm happy to do that one-on-one.
Kristy, for anybody out there who, I guess, who's in the audience or who may be watching or reading about us later, one question I frequently have is, I need mental health care, or someone I know or love needs mental health care. I have no idea how to get it. What would be your advice to somebody who wants to find mental health care treatment in the community? What's the first thing that they should do?
Well, as you all know, our eastern region for Mental Health and Disability Services has a great infrastructure. And you'll see in your executive summary, we're supporting a lot of the work they're doing and looking that. We were challenged to make sure we are partnering with them. I would go to the eastern, if I needed support in my family, I would go to the Eastern Iowa Region Mental Health and Disability Services website. They have a great website that you can get crisis services if you need crisis care. If you're looking for services just to connect, you're not in crisis, but you need someone to go talk to and visit with, there's a lot of direct links to help you navigate to get to that. I will tell you, Public Health is also updating. We have a resource, LMC, which stands for Louisa Muscatine Cedar Counties, lmcresources.org, and we're updating that site as well, that will link to these mental health priorities and services that will support people.
And I would just add that that website that she mentioned, the Eastern Iowa, Mental Health and Disability Services Region is easterniowamhds.org. It's got a lot of resources, and there's a mental health twenty-four hour crisis hotline, big numbers right up top, eight four 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 three zero zero three seven five. Call them, they save lives.
Yes. I know that mental health, if I could ask a question, who has mental health? I see a few hands raised. I should see all hands raised. If we all have mental health, we all have a brain, therefore we have mental health. And some days it's great, and some days it's terrible. It's not great. And there's, you know, from minor mental health issues to chronic and severe mental health issues. So there's all of the above, and support that's needed for individuals. And we need to know, as the common public, how to access care, and it's out there. We do have a lot of resources in our county. We are blessed, we are fortunate. It's just knowing how to navigate that, especially when you're in crisis.
May I ask a question?
Please.
So I have a daughter that is frequently in need of access to care in Muscatine County. And what we lack is, we don't have a psychiatrist that's dedicated to Muscatine County, and we don't have housing in Muscatine County for people. So what is your prognosis kind of for funding what we lack, what we need here in Muscatine County, so that our mentally ill don't keep getting bounced and transported out of Muscatine County and sent to places like Johnson County, or sometimes even frequently even further?
Yeah, that is a great question, and a much bigger question than I would have time to respond to. I do know that the eastern region, that is something that they are consistently looking at, those structures, infrastructures, and support systems on how to have a crisis response and a better internal system within our county. So I, you know, I would refer to that group specifically because that is one of their focus areas.
Thank you.
How does the program work with veterans?
Yes.
Do you have veterans?
Yes.
And where can they go? Can they go through the program? Are there people that are going to be able to work with the veterans? A lot of the veterans don't need necessarily a psychiatrist, but they need, they need coaching, they need group therapy. My brother founded an organization called HERO, and that's a program in Washington County, but it's healing and English River Outfitters for veterans by veterans. Is there a way to get connected if nowhere in Washington County?
I love that idea. I think we have services for veterans in our county, Muscatine County Community Services. And that is definitely an area, just to answer the first question, any adult that is in need, these services, the crisis line, they'll take calls for adolescents as well, but it is primarily for adults.
Okay.
So anybody can call that, whether you're a veteran or you're not a veteran. You can call these services and crisis lines. Having services like that in our community would be a great asset.
Well, it's in our community. We have it. I'll get you a card after the meeting.
Okay. So understanding those services would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Mr. Gertz points out an important thing, and that is, we have a lot of services. We have had trouble connecting everybody to all of them. Everybody's doing some here, and here, and here, so thank you for that.
One question, Kristy.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say that all your numbers, your phone numbers and stuff are really nice and everything, but I tell you what, if I'm on the edge and I'm getting ready to check out, I ain't calling anybody. Who do I talk to then?
Go to the emergency room. Go directly to the emergency room. They have all of the pieces in that emergency room due to the Eastern Iowa Region.
The reason I ask is that I've been down this road here, and it's not a pretty road here in Muscatine.
It's not. It's a fair.
It's not at all.
It's a fair question, and I appreciate you sharing that and being vulnerable to share that. You know, it's, it is a difficult process, and when you are in crisis, you're absolutely right. You're not thinking of where to find help. You might have a loved one is that is, though. So loved ones can call this crisis line and say, what do I do? Where do I go? I would always encourage you, if you are feeling suicidal and/or homicidal either, go directly to the emergency room. They can do immediate telehealth psychiatry and assessment. And they can get you connected. They have care coordination there, both internal care coordination and in community. So when you leave, you're not disconnected from care.
Veterans get bounced. You get bounced. I'm gonna tell you the real story here.
Yeah. I'd love to visit with you more.
We may get a group and visit with you at.
I would, I would love to.
The numbers, the numbers that are posted for the veterans, they go to numbers that don't give answers. And then the ER staff, they do their best, but their hands get tired.
Their systems to function within.
That might be a conversation to get Jennifer.
Yes.
Involved in as well, because she's our Veterans Outreach Coordinator for the county.
We lack a psychiatrist in Muscatine County.
Yeah, and then we could, like, you know, like Nathan said, we could start connecting, connecting the organizations that help.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Into the mental health.
The lack of psychiatry is a, is a system-wide problem. Unfortunately, that's a profession that practitioners, they don't necessarily want to practice. They tend to want to huddle around, they're typically in education, and we have a real difficult time. And the mental health region is struggling hard to try to get feet on the street, as I call it, people in our communities to help.
I will share.
Yeah, very difficult.
The psychiatry, just the career psychiatry is diminishing greatly. We are seeing, Joe Lilly, who is a Director of Outpatient Services of Robert Young, has shared that there's an increase in the nurse practitioner, so the mid-level, and that is one of the strategies, is increasing FTE, which is full-time equivalency, an employed person in a nurse practitioner, that mid-level. And so they currently have a student there that is learning and training, and their goal is to retain that student.
Well, another, another thing that I can tell you with regard to the mental health professional capacity, that's something that the mental health region has been looking at. We're starting to study ways we can incentivize people to come here, whether that's by offering, you know, stipends, or, you know, working with the state to get some kind of incentives, so people will go more into the mental health field. We'll locate in traditional underserved areas. So there's a lot of moving parts, as I'm sure you all know, but.
We need to have housing too.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, you know, one of the things the region has done is started to expand into peer support housing, peer support run housing, I should say, and so.
Driven alcohol abuse housing for veterans in our county.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're sending people to Council Bluffs, Sioux City, you know, sometimes to Illinois.
Nathan, I mean, he is a huge advocate. I mean, he's our partner in the company of mental health. I know that. So, I mean, he's the guy that will help get the answers.
I appreciate you saying that. But one of the things that we absolutely need to do is, is there's always funding challenges, and that's something we've kind of wrestled with Des Moines for the last several years, and that's continuing. We're, we're right now funded at a very unsatisfactory level. Probably our cap is about sixty to seventy percent of where it should be. And that's not, we're not asking the state for a handout. We're asking, let us tax the people in Muscatine County to take care of the people in Muscatine County. Let Scott, you know, tax people Scott to take care of Scott County residents. Any advocacy you folks can put on to the folks in Des Moines to say, hey, let us take care of our own. You're gonna give us this job. And now they're adding kids to the mix, too, without adding much more than a couple hundred thousand dollars for counseling positions across the whole state. Anything you could do to support that advocacy effort. Because they hear from us all the time. They're sick, you know. Oh, look, it's Jeff calling, it's Nathan calling, it's Scott calling, whoever. But you guys can make a real difference in that regard.
There is federal funding, there's a trust, there's an executive, and there is a mission task. So there is the funds there, so we don't need to really tax our people.
Right. But who knows how long those will be there. Those federal funds, they come and they go, you know, we want to make sure we have a sustainable, well, that's fair, I suppose, that not a lot of federal programs disappear. But we want to make sure we have a sustainable basis, that we can take care of our own without depending on people outside and their wimp as well. So anything you folks can do. And I appreciate you bringing that information to us as well. The more we can get people talking that are involved with this, the better we can do.
I just have one, one comment. And I, I really like all the programs. And mentioning to access to that, one of the things I was wondering is, do we have any of those links on our actual county page, where somebody could go to?
The Muscatine County Board of Health page is actually on the county website.
But if they go to, or Suicide Prevention, or YourLifeIowa.org, or the, you know, if somebody was in a situation.
I'm not sure if they're on the, on the mental, or the Community Services page or not, but I can, I can look at that and.
I'm wondering if there would be, you know, ways to have somebody access. Everybody seems to be going under the internet. And if you can view our page and then say, hey, is there any recommendations that you think you could say, hey, if you put our link to this, or our link to that, and you can share that with Nancy, that would be helpful for us. So if somebody wants to say, hey, this is, how do I get services, just like we were just asking earlier, you know, how do they get those services? It would be great to be able to say, well, here's a link on our page for the county that, you know, shows where somebody can get access to your services.
Great idea.
See if we could do that. Maybe that would help us.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You have other questions?
Kristy, thank you so much. Keep up the great work. Thank you to our Public Health Director, Kristy Robey-Williams. Next item on our agenda is item number six, presentation of a request for the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors with the county attorney to take action against Sheriff CJ Ryan for abuse of disposition with Kyle Gertz. Am I standing there right now? Gertz, Gertz, how do you say it?
Gertz.
Gertz.
Got it. My name's Kyle Gertz, and I live at four sixteen Hyrum Avenue, Nichols, Iowa. I look forward to the, to the board working with us to, that was like a great, great lead-in there, because that's what my brother did, is, is really focused on mental health. But off of that, I'm gonna look at the veterans. A lot of veterans, non-veterans, you see bikers, got a former sheriff's office and police department back here. So the people that were offended, that are sitting here now, are the ones we need to talk about. When we returned, and I, two weeks ago when I, when I was here, I mentioned that I'd be back, and I'd bring some veterans and bring some people along. Well, it's true. I mean, it happened. I mean, the, as you can see, so now this is, this is just one little snippet that I, that I was able to get, but it does show where Deputy seven zero zero seven, which is Sergeant Schmidt, Sergeant Schmidt is his name. I believe it's Sergeant, if I'm offending him, I'm sorry. Where he put it out, and the time's kind of hard to read, but that was Saturday at five oh nine. Saturday at ten forty-five, ten forty-five, badge number seven zero zero one, said disregard earlier page for traffic control the next day, for tomorrow, which is gonna be Sunday. That's Sheriff CJ Ryan. Seven zero zero one is Sheriff Ryan. So right there, where he stated to you, Scott, that he said that he did put a request, you know, for volunteers, if that was all that went out for volunteers, and then he shut it down five hours later, he didn't put anything out. Deputy Schmidt did. And apparently Sheriff Ryan didn't want it to be out there. So there's two things that I'm focused on here. One is the blatant disrespect for veterans, and by telling, by denying support at any road crossings, which was the safety issue when we crossed the bypass with five hundred motorcycles and a hundred cars, and we had absolutely not one deputy, not one reserve deputy, nothing, sitting there. Nobody. Nobody gets, nobody could help us out. Now, I, I don't have it with me. I, I will have it next week if I need to bring it. When we rolled into Nichols, and I, I've done a public records request, so I'll find out which one was sitting there, there was a sheriff's car sitting on the east side of Newt's Cafe. They sit there a lot. I mean, that's a good place to sit, no problem. But he was sitting there in his car when we rolled into town. When he seen all the bikes, he turned and went east out of town and kept right on going. There should have been support once he seen that. Obviously, he wasn't on a call. He was sitting there. But when he seen all of them, now, when I get the public records request, and there was a call, and he called away, fine. But if there wasn't, that's an issue. Because now we have a deputy following orders from his sheriff, from his boss, that's blatant Because now we have a deputy following orders from his sheriff, from his boss, that's blatantly, that's not serving the people. According to, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna try to state anything or quote anything, but when I looked it up, as far as abusive position and abuse of power by an elected official is against the law. We can't do that. As the mayor, I can't do that in my little town in Nichols. So if he gave orders that were directly against the safety of the people in this county, which is what it was, that's wrong, and it needs to be investigated. We need to know that. The people sitting right here need to know that? The, the five hundred people that rode on the motorcycle ride need to know that? You guys need to know that. Because why would we let him be here and have that job and blatantly not support the safety of me, of her, of you? And that's what he's done. So I'm calling on you, as the board of supervisors, to get with the county attorney, because as you guys stated two weeks ago, you can't fire, you can't suspend any of them, them or, but you can request an investigation. You can direct the county attorney to do an investigation. Because it's for the people, and you all work for the people, and if we want an investigation done on one of our elected officials, it's our responsibility to come to you to ask for that. Am I correct?
Mostly.
Okay?
I, I did speak with the county attorney, and I asked him to come this morning, unfortunately, I guess they have a murder trial that they've been working on all weekend, so they were not able to have anyone here, I'd have preferred that, but he did say if you had any questions after this, to direct them to him in writing, he'd be happy to answer. But, so here's, here's what I understand. Elected officials are kind of weird in that we have power in our own areas, we don't have power over other elected officials. So Leslie Sol, who, who sometimes sits where the gracious Betty is today, she's an elected official, she's our county auditor, we can tell Nancy what to do, and Nancy may tell us to go where the sun doesn't shine, but we can't tell Leslie what to do, because she's an elected official. Same thing, we, we can ask the attorney for help in, in terms of giving us legal advice, we can't direct him to start investigations, we can't, we can't discipline him or the sheriff or anyone else. So I said, ask the county attorney, what, do we have any legal authority in this? He said, you really don't, we have, we have no authority. Citizens, I, as I understand, can ask the county attorney to start an investigation. There's, there's also some provision, which I don't fully understand, because honestly I haven't looked at it, that allows citizens, a group of citizens that come together and put down a certain monetary amount in a bond, can file suit against public officials. Like I said, I haven't, you know, I advise you, don't, don't listen to me for legal advice on that. But, yeah, so we, we, we don't have any authority to ask the county attorney.
Okay.
To investigate.
That's the way I've spoken with him.
But you can, you can, you can recommend that an investigation be done. And according to what I've read from the Attorney General, is that, is that State?
There is a State Attorney General.
State, okay. From that office, that the board of supervisors can, if it's an illegal act, and he broke the law, can direct the county attorney to do the investigation. And in this case, he broke the law. He failed, he gave an order, which is a, he gave an order to his people, so...
Kyle?
Yes?
I mean, you're, you're showing this, this information, how do we know seven zero zero seven is Schmidt or...
Because I asked the sheriff's department.
So they gave you...
Yeah, they're bad, they're just department members, it's public knowledge, this came through, you know this...
Just ask me, because I, I don't, I don't know.
This is Muscom.
Okay.
I mean, that's another thing, is he gave that order directed through one of our, we pay taxes, Muscom, he used a, oh, one of our, a government program, or a state program, or a county program, to communicate to his officers to do something illegal.
Yeah, absolutely, you have the right for, any, any resident can ask a FOIA request, which they would have to give all communications.
And I've, I've done that, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm waiting on my public record to come back. Now, I'll do my due diligence, I'll go through them, I'll make sure I have my notes, if I have them before next week, I'll, I'll come back.
This is a, this is a little difficult situation, Phil, and appreciate your patience with us, I mean, we, we clearly, I've actually, you know, unfortunately, I didn't know Chuck, I've read a lot about him in the last few weeks, and, and he did some great work and was a true hero. I have spoken with our legislative delegation in the area, and I think there's some real interest in, in trying to push forward a statewide recognition of his work. I spoke with Representative Carl Olson, and he's been in conversation with Kaufman and Green and...
And, and I understand that, Jeff.
It's, it's awesome, but you know, it, it kind of points out to me, and I don't, I don't know, I didn't know your brother, and I, I know you, and, and a lot of people do good work, and it doesn't go, they don't do it for the recognition.
I understand that, Jeff, this was a veteran.
Yeah.
This was a veteran, a fallen veteran, the week prior, and I do not in any way, any way at all, I want to ensure on the record is, I do not want to take anything away from Devin. When Devin got hit and he died, I don't take anything away, he's a great firefighter, did good work, I didn't know Devin personally, but I read a lot about him too. But the week prior, the day before, there was a lot of support, there was a lot of support, there was county cars there. Jeff, the county was involved on Saturday for Devin, but not involved on Sunday for my brother.
Yeah.
So, don't, I, I understand what you're, what you're trying to say is that, you know, there's no way to, to step into this, but there is.
Well, I think the challenge, and I, and I read some of the, I saw some of the information come through the city, because the mayor's looked into why was Muscatine Fire and Police not there as well, and I haven't seen it from the county, because I have the same question, you know, because, you know, anybody with a military background understands these organizations are run very much under SOPs, so they have standard procedures for whatever we do, what it is we do. And I looked at the SOP that Muscatine Fire and PD look at, and it, it makes some sense, and they, they followed their SOP. Now, they, their SOP had an elevation process, and maybe it didn't go through that, and that's, that's a questionable, I don't know what the sheriff's SOP is.
We were told no, by the fire department three times, we were told no twice by the police department, but I'm dealing with that with the mayor. When I leave here, when I left here two weeks ago, that's where I went, when I leave here today, that's where I'll go, we're gonna talk again. But that's the city, I'm dealing with the county right here. And the county failed to provide safety, safety for its residents. Failed, based on a directive by the sheriff, period. I mean, I mean, how, how can you not, how can that not be an order that's, that shouldn't have even been followed for one, but I know by talking to some of the people that work for him, that wouldn't have been a good thing either, because he's vindictive, and he'll come back after him, and their jobs were at stake if they did it.
You got a question?
So, say this was a parade, and we had a lot of people, like this many people, coming through for a parade. Take the, take the death out of it, but we had this amount of people coming through our town, our roads, our highways, what response would have been mounted by our PD, county sheriff, to ensure the safety for a parade? Take all the personalities out of it and ego, and apply the same situation.
Yeah, and, and that's something I can't answer, because I don't, I don't know the SOP, and I, and I think we should be able to answer that.
For a parade.
Right, for any, any large public gathering.
Exactly, and apply the criteria, and, and therein should, should lie our answer. Take out the personality.
Got it.
And, and please let, let me ask my question. So, so if we have a parade coming through, we should have a response to ensure safety of people traveling through our roads. If you have a funeral coming through, that's a really big funeral coming through for anybody else, say the governor dies, and we have a motorcade coming through, you're gonna have response. Any dignitary, anybody else coming through the county is gonna mount a response. You're not gonna have a stand-down order coming through from CJ Ryan. This is what he's trying to say to you.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I know that he's grieving, and he's trying, he's trying to...
No, I'm okay, I'm, I'm okay, I'm just, I'm...
I know you are okay.
I'm okay. Can I, hey, let me, let me finish, please.
There must be a response to ensure the safety of the people traveling through, and every other town in Iowa understood this, except for our town. Our town was the only town that got this one sheriff saying, nope, stand down. I geared away from the motorcade.
Let me, let me finish, because you're grieving as well, you knew Chuck, let me, let me finish, please.
I was at the fire station, everybody was in the bay. There was no emergencies, there were no calls, there was no other thing for them to attend to, because I had to go home and check on my son. So there was nothing else for the firefighters, there was, they were nowhere else, they were all parked in the bay. There was no reason that they couldn't have attended to everybody else that was driving through town. I'm telling you, they were nowhere else, they had nowhere else to be, I witnessed it myself. He's spot on to say that they were ignored, that they didn't respond, that they weren't there to escort his brother through, and to ensure the safety of all the people that were riding through town and the town's people as traffic was coming through town, which is the responsibility of sheriff and fire.
So I would say those are perfectly valid questions.
Um, I'm sorry.
No, I don't mean to cut you off, Kyle, I just wanted to say, we don't set up traffic safety protocols, we're all building for them, fortunately. Those are questions that need to be directed to the Muscatine Police, to the sheriff, and if, like I say, we, we don't have any authority for them. If you don't like their answers, you go to the county attorney, that's just the process of the law. You know, as, as, as much as we may feel strongly one way or the other, or if any of us didn't feel strongly at all, that wouldn't change the reality of what the law is, and we're all, you know, creatures of that law. So, I'm sorry, Kyle.
Um, no, hey, thank you very much. And if you haven't noticed, she is a veteran, okay?
And I'm also a registered nurse, and I know my country's whole behind it.
So she's been involved in this a lot. She understands, and, and the thing is, we talked about SOPs, protocol, the thing is, that's exactly what we're talking about. So, prior to, the day prior, the SOP was different apparently than the day, the next day, at least for CJ Ryan. He obviously read it one way on Friday and Saturday, and differently on Sunday. Would you, would you agree with that? Now, he, obviously, he gave, he didn't give an order on Friday or Saturday to stand down for Devin's motorcade that came through, but he did on Sunday. Do you, I mean, is it clear, I mean, that is a clear order to disregard, correct?
I mean, that's, I think you're asking a legal question, we, we've got, just so folks can see.
Well, then I'm asking you, I'm asking you, Chairperson, to, to take this to the county attorney, ask him that question.
I have, I have.
Did you show him, hold on, please.
No, I didn't show him this, but I said, I made him, I made him aware of the situation, I made him aware of, and, and made sure that Nancy also made him aware.
Did you show him this?
I just got it.
You have not, because I just gave it to you.
Right.
So now, you have something to take and show him.
And I will, but, but what I want to tell you is, the laws that bind us, we don't have that authority. Now, if, if, it looked like, if we had video of the sheriff shooting someone in the head...
If you had video of, if you had anybody out there that gives an order that's unlawful, that's in any of your positions, somebody would be looking at it.
Sure.
Right?
Absolutely.
Somebody has to look at it. You can strongly recommend to the county attorney, as the board, who's sitting here listening to the people, to investigate this, because right there's the order.
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. If you have an electronic copy of this, send it to me, otherwise I'll scan it, and I'll send it to the county attorney, I'll tell him, you raised concern that, I don't, I don't know the legal issues.
Let's go one better, how about we make sure he's here next week? Well, you guys can do what you want with this, because I'm looking for an action on this today.
I mean, his schedule is one of the other, I, I have no...
He's been, you know what, this is like the second, I, I've been to a lot of these meetings. Normally, I always see him, and I always see the sheriff. Okay? Huh?
I'd say normally they don't come, but they're, they're here.
They've been here a lot, I mean, I can't... Huh?
I know that, I know that, I know that the county attorney...
They have a schedule to be here next week.
He can't be here next week, he's in his trial that is expected to last a week and a half, and it started this morning.
It should be done by seven o'clock in the evening next week, because next week's an evening meeting, right?
We don't, we haven't had evening meetings for several years now.
Oh, okay, I thought you had a seven o'clock.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah. And, and I'll pass this on to him, legal passes on it, we'll make sure he gets it. One, one second, sir. And, yeah, we will, we pass that, we're not here to make legal conclusions, so I can't tell you if this breaks the law or not, don't know. I don't know, I'm not qualified to say. I'm a lawyer in, in my regular life, but not this kind of lawyer, and even if I were, I wouldn't presume to speak as a lawyer for this organization.
I'm not asking you to speak as, as a lawyer. I, right now, I'm asking you to speak as the county board of supervisors, elected to take care of me, and these people, to direct our elected county attorney to look into this. You can, okay, I got it, you can't direct him, highly advise him to take a look at this.
Yep, and we will.
But I mean, I don't just mean by an electronic, a, a email, so you can look at it and go, yeah. Because CJ's my friend, he's not, no, I, I'm not gonna go into all that, I'll, I'll be careful what I say, I'm, keep my, keep my, keep my, uh...
Emotions.
My bearings here, okay?
Did you have a question, sir?
I'll let, sorry to finish. So, the two big things were, that showed that it was not right, was one, the SOP, we're gonna talk about SOP, for the event, the funeral, the day or two prior, there was no stand-down order. On Sunday, if we're gonna follow the SOP, somebody didn't follow the SOP, or they didn't follow it the day before, either way, somebody violated the SOP. And that person, in writing, by his note, is our elected sheriff. So, he didn't have anybody there to do this, because we don't direct people to do that, but knowing that this was gonna be here today, and I know, I know Mike Wade walks over here frequently, but that's why we have Mike Wade, that, that works at the, the deputy that's on, on duty at the courthouse, he makes sure that everything's going okay, he checked in on here already this morning. So you got this many people, and we, we have one deputy that checks in. We had five hundred people, and not a single deputy checked in. Kind of a, I mean, am I making my point as clear as possible?
It's an absolute legit question.
It is. Um, it was not a question, it is, it's a statement. Because how can we have one deputy check in on forty people, and zero deputies check, check in on five hundred, when there was one sitting in my town in Nichols that left town because he wasn't supposed to help?
One, one question I have, and that, because I'm a little confused. Obviously, this is a veteran's issue, because your brother was, served the country, and so many of these folks here did that as well. And...
I'll just grab my water, flavored water.
Flavored water, yeah. And Mr. S. Brooke also is a veteran as well. Are, are you saying, so I can understand, that the sheriff's actions were anti-veteran or anti-your brother?
It was anti-veteran because of me. CJ Ryan has a personal, we, we have history.
Okay.
Okay? And he made it personal by not supporting my brother and veterans, it turned out to veterans, it started out just my brother, and then it turned into a room of veterans that, some of them don't even live in our county, but they're here because it offended veterans, some of them aren't even veterans, and they're here because it offended them. Because, when we bring a veteran home, he was draped under our flag when he came home. So CJ Ryan disrespected veterans, disrespected my brother, but that's a personal issue with the disrespect to my brother. It grew from there, because they were notified, they were called, the police department was called, the fire department was called, every organization from the Missouri border to here, flags, fire trucks, police officers, sheriff's department, every single county. Now why can we have every county support and not here? That's why it needs to be looked at, because he used a personal reason to give an unlawful order to his deputies. That's illegal. You cannot do that. Just because I, as the mayor, because I don't like somebody in my, in the city of Nichols, I can't tell the fire department, whoa, their house is burning, yeah, slow down. That's an unlawful order. I can't tell my chief of police that works in my town, you know what? Uh, now, I don't like Scott Sauer, so every time he comes through town, make sure you get him. That's an unlawful order.
Sure.
But I also can't say, I also can't say, um, you know, Jerry Ford comes into Nichols, he can do whatever he wants. I want the cop to leave him alone, that's an unlawful order. Giving an unlawful order in the military, the police department, the fire department, sheriff's department is illegal. I don't care what SOP you look at, that is illegal to give, give an unlawful order. Then when his deputies followed it, made it even worse. That would be like giving an order to fire on a town, and somebody followed it. That's an unlawful order. For me, as a sergeant major in the United States Army, I would have been in prison for that, for directing that. The non-safety of the people we're supposed to protect. That's exactly what he did. He, he did not provide safety for the people of his county that he's been elected to protect. It's illegal. He broke the law, so you need to ask the county attorney strongly to look into this. It is a, it is a law matter. It is illegal. There is a law written that he broke by being an elected official, and he misused his power. So what I'm asking today is, will the board of supervisors today tell us that they're gonna move forward? There's gonna be some type of action other than just an email, Nathan, to the county attorney, or to the sheriff? Why can't you four or five talk to the sheriff? You can talk to him, you can ask him about that order, can't you? That's not true. You've talked to him about other things that he, that I'm asking about. Can somebody, can somebody sit down? I'll ask him. I won't ask him alone, but I want you guys there, somebody needs to be there. And let's ask him the question. Why did you give an unlawful order, sheriff? And that's exactly how, what he needs to be asked. Why did you give an unlawful order? And what I'm gonna keep pushing is that unlawful order that he was given, that he gave. And if you can't see that, I don't understand it, because you're all elected, you can't do it, I can't do it, but we're gonna let Sheriff Ryan do it? Scott, any response?
Well, what I understand about this situation is, and we've gone back to Mr. Ex Brook's, uh, and I think from what I understand is because of his being a, an active firefighter was the, uh, was the reason on that situation, I believe, from, from the conversations I've had and what I've looked into. That's the only thing that I can think of that might be the, the answer to this. You know, there's lots of funerals that go on all the time, you know?
He wasn't an active firefighter in Muscatine. Didn't he work, at the time, he was working in Monsanto, correct? Right, he's a firefighter in Monsanto, at the, at the Monsanto plant.
He's a, he is a volunteer fighter.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's the only thing I can think of.
Again, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take away from.
It's not the point.
Yeah, exactly, it's not the point. I, I just wanted to use it as an example, that the SOP, if the SOP, and let's get very specific, if the SOP says this, and that's what was followed the day before, why wasn't it followed the following day? That's the answer we need.
Right, what's the difference between the two? That's the question. And you asked for the SOP, right, in your request, and you just haven't gotten?
I did not. I will, I'll, I'll ask for it.
Okay, because it seems to me that.
I can, I can tell you, I had a conversation with Sheriff Ryan, um, last week, and according to Sheriff Ryan, there is no written SOP.
So basically, you can use the damn one, please.
Just make it up, to go with it.
Again, it's, as, as elected officials, hey, guys, as elected officials, sometimes it does come down to that. We have to make a, a decision. We have to make a, just, I got that. However, if there were no other things going on in the county, and he had two deputies, I know for a fact he's broke, at least on a Sunday, had one deputy go to the Alzheimer's walk, and only had one deputy left in the county. I know that for a fact, because the deputy was on the Alzheimer's walk. Because that's where Sheriff Ryan told him to be. Okay, he was able to split those two and only have one in the county. It took longer than the 20 minutes to get from Nichols to Muscatine on those Alzheimer's walk. So he could have, with no calls, which when I get the, when I get the, when I, when I see actually the public records, if there were no calls, then that's another time. He made the decision to send a deputy to the Alzheimer's walk, but he couldn't make the decision to send somebody to a veteran from our county, from our town, 23 years. He couldn't send somebody to that. To me, if that's the case, so if he's not breaking the law on that one, his priorities are kind of screwed up.
He spit on my flag by doing that.
His priorities are screwed up, because, I mean, if you go on the Alzheimer's, fine, I mean, I, I go on the suicide prevention walk every year. I try to do two or three of them. I lost a son. But you know what? That's where my heart's at, and I'll do it. But it doesn't change what my decision's gonna be the next day. So if those, if that's what he's doing, somehow we need to know. Why is, why can this sheriff just, well, I'm gonna, I can do it today, but I can't do it tomorrow? I can do it for this, this Alzheimer's walk, but I can't do it for a veteran? It boils right down to the fact that he gave an unlawful order, period. That has to be looked into. Why can he do that? Why can he do something illegal? And I, I'm gonna ask you again today, what, what action will you take at the board on how, on what happens here? Because it's on the agenda, I'm asking for a vote. You guys are gonna move forward something with this.
So it seems to me the, I mean, I think we all agree that we don't have the power directly to do anything, but as you say, we can ask the attorney, or county attorney, rather, to look into it. The appropriate questions to the county attorney are, based on this, did, did sheriff, is it likely that Sheriff Ryan committed an unlawful act? And if the answer to that is yes, the second question is, what is the appropriate response? Do you agree?
Right.
And I think.
I think what might make sense is that we do, we draft a letter for the chair, and, and stating to that, to that effect, basically. That we request the county attorney to look into the allegation that the sheriff has made an unlawful order to his deputies in this matter. And, and have a formal, formal letter that we could adopt, we could probably take, make a motion today and take that action. That'd be sent with the chair's signature, and then see what the county attorney's response would be. Uh, he obviously can do whatever he wants as well, he's an elected official. But, and, and to another, to another effect, Kyle, and I would be more than happy to contact the sheriff and see if you and he and I could sit down and we could ask him those questions together, if you're interested, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I would do that. Um, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I, I would do that, and I, I would do everything in my power to keep the emotion out of it, okay? But Jeff, I can't promise you that.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Okay, um, that's where, it does, it's, it started out for me as a, it was a personal issue. I had to check myself, um, and I'm very capable of doing that, and put it in perspective that this was now about my brother. And then as it grew, I talked to people, I have veterans that said, they were, they felt disrespected. This is a veteran thing. It's not even a Muscatine County thing, what he did. So, yeah, I, I would love to sit down and talk with him. But, um, I, first, first thing I would like to do is, is again, ask the board for a motion to move forward with some type of action.
Well, I'd make, make the motion that we, that we coined that letter, and Nancy, you could help us with the, the exact verbiage just to request the county attorney to do that. I think that's appropriate. Santos, second there, Nathan. So I think that would make perfect sense.
So I have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Santos, for the board to authorize the chair to send a letter to the county attorney asking, one, uh, to consider whether Sheriff CJ Ryan issued an illegal order in this particular case, referring to this communication log given to us by Mr. Harris. And two, if that was an unlawful order, what is the appropriate response?
Correct, I would move this part, yes.
Yes, sir.
Could we get?
That, did you get all that, Nancy, or should I?
Yep.
So that is the motion on the floor, it has been, uh, made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to see if we could get that, but maybe with some dates on that.
Um, the dates are.
I can't really read it.
You can't read them very well, but that's what, you guys should be able to, that's public record there. Should be a Muscatine, Muscatine sheet.
I wanna make sure that we're getting, because you mentioned the different times, and some of these are in the PMs and the AMs, and I wanna make sure that we're, we're correctly following up on the right potential allegation.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Patrick, Nancy, sleep.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Kyle. Do you want, are you looking for one of these?
I need to talk to Matt.
Here.
I just want to thank you, my beloved lady of Nichols, and thank you, I was very upset that everyone committed, either do something.
Get back to my agenda here. Item number seven, uh, item with county engineer Keith White. Good morning, Keith.
Good morning. We have, uh, two utility permits this morning. They're both from Windstream Iowa Communications of Little Rock, Arkansas. And one is for plowing and boring a copper cable on the west side of Davis Avenue from Highway 22 North to Nichols Ag, and then boring underneath the road for a service to Nichols Ag. The other one is installing a copper cable in the west right away of Moscow Road. Best described is from 1246 Moscow Road, south for 1700 feet to an existing pedestal.
This guy's moved.
Second.
Jeff has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, projects update, um, just wanted to note, note that, uh, the hot mix asphalt resurfacing of Villas is substantially complete. They got the rum strips milled in Saturday, so that work's essentially done. So what we've got, one going out there, are the two bridge replacement projects, they're both Bucks Cobers. Uh, one is 155th Street, west of State 70, the way is there, it's really west, just west of Elder Avenue. And that's Iowa Bridge and Court, they got a small crew, and they're moving at a slower pace. They've poured the curtain wall and have an inlet section for footing for next. The other's on North Isid, um, Avenue, and which is McCully Cobert, and they've poured all the footing, and they're hoping to start four and wall sections this week, and that one's moving along pretty well. Questions on construction? Design, not a lot of change, other than just to note the 231st G28 paving, uh, which is both federal aid and farm-to-market portions, is scheduled to be in the November 19th DOT letting. Hickory Hills has locating service lined up, uh, the, we're gonna be mowing areas down there so that they can use ground penetrating radar to try and find their main. And then Bridgestone is undecided at the moment, they'll let us know when they have decided about their main. They may just abandon their main. And the other is Bridge 163, which is the one on 120th, west of West Liberty, is also, uh, in the November 19th letting. And I, I didn't misspeak, the project number looks like the old federal aid, but it is a swap. So it is actually state dollars.
Keith, Keith, on that Hickory Hills situation.
Yes.
So have we come to, has anybody come to any resolution? We really, my understanding is, don't really know where the water line is. Is that the challenge, or we know where it is, and it's must be moved?
No, we don't know, we don't know where it is, that's the challenge, either one of them.
And, 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 you know, the type of water line it is is causing the, the difficulty? Do we know, or?
We don't know what we don't know.
The, in, in the case of Hickory Hills, if it was built according to the plans, then we have a conflict with our roadway. Lots of times, particularly back when, things aren't built according to plans, and so we don't know where that's at. And the same with the Bridgestone Bandag Water Main. If, if we knew where it was, it may not be a conflict, but we don't know where it is.
So, so we don't really know what the situation is on Hickory Hills until this locate is done, and we know.
Odds are they've got some that've gotta relocate, but I think the odds are good there.
And is, is the up, is, is the, is the, is it possible that there are only sections that would have to be relocated, not the entire line?
Yes.
Okay, because it's rather lengthy, is my understanding.
I mean, once they get across from the south side to the north side and up towards the, everything that goes on from there is fine. There are just a few short areas that are probably in conflict, who have remained under deep the road.
Keith, when you, when you say, we don't know where they're at, does that mean that we have not done the line locates yet, or the line locates?
We don't do the line locates, the owners do the line locates.
Okay.
Okay, we don't locate telephone, electrical, water, sewer, gas, any of that. No, we, we do not know where it's at. We know, in their case, there was a set of plans, we know where the plans say it was. That's what we have shown on our plans, but we do not. When, when any of these projects start, we, there's a different type of a one call, which is a design request, and then the companies come out and locate their electrical, look for their telephone, and we, we go survey it in and know where it is rolling through our project. Those are the two unknown entities that, that we do not know.
And so.
We don't know where they're at.
And that's been scheduled within the process?
Supposedly September 16th and 17th on Hickory Hills, and Bridgestone is aware of that, that they could.
So they're bringing in some, some third parties of, of a one call type deal that can do the locates, and then they're gonna spray the concrete or the ground and whatnot, and then identify that. Will we get depths as well on that?
We should.
Around type of a.
We, we, we should. The, um, you know, in the case of the Hickory Hills one, power and water, Muscatine Power and Water did as a courtesy locate what they could locate, with, with the lack of valves and things to tie onto, they, they just could not locate all of it. And unfortunately, in the area where it's a conflict, where they really couldn't locate with any certainty.
So there, you know, yeah, and I had a little visit with someone from there, and my understanding is there's a, a potentially, not a real long section that is the one that's difficult to find, and probably the one that's in conflict.
Yes.
And so that may be the option, is just to deal with that one section, not the rest of the pipe. Yeah. And then is, is MPW, I mean, is, so is the long-term solution here that it stays in that homeowners association? Or is MPW gonna take that line over or?
Hey, that, that's for MPW to say, but I don't believe they can take it over.
From what I?
An agent private line that I...
I'm just, I'm just not crazy about, you know, you have private ownership in a, you know, a non-utili, let me put it that way, because we have utilities all over that are privately held. But utilities have a special place in law that homeowners association does not have. And I have great discomfort with a, a long section of, you know, homeowner kind of association ownership of stuff in a public right-of-way. I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me. And it needs to, you know, I don't know, I think, I would, I think there needs to be a way to figure this out, to get that out of private ownership and into a utility, more of a utility ownership situation. I think this exists in a couple of places on the outskirts of Muscatine, is that true?
I, I would say several places.
I'm guessing probably Hickory Hills, probably Mulberry Manor, Bright Prairie.
Those are Power and Water owned.
They're Power and Water to the?
They were paid for by the subdivisions, Power and Water owned.
Okay.
It, it's just like the water main that was ran down Park Avenue West to service us. We paid for it. Once it passed, Power and Water owns it, where it's in the right-of-way.
Yeah, I'm okay with, I think that would have been, I would have preferred to have seen that done in this situation.
For some reason, these were in the era that lots of different things happened. The answer probably would have been to not permit it, but...
Wasn't your, wasn't your watch, was it Keith?
What was not my watch, you know, it wouldn't matter if it was. Wouldn't matter if it was, it would have been you folks that would decide, you were telling them no, there are water mains, which...
Yeah, I would have said no.
So there's one. We need at least three, so. You know, that was a time when, like I said, some things like this happened, and I think not just in the county, elsewhere.
Well, the unfortunate situation is you have, and I don't know how many homeowners that are probably vaguely aware or unaware of the, of the long-term commitment that they have there and, and probably haven't made fiscal plans as, as such. You know, I know if I were a developer building that and I put it in, they would, into their spec, they would take that over and they would rebate me from their service fees over the years for the cost I incurred. And I'm wondering if they did that with that developer or not, if we have any... Yeah, just really interesting, so.
When we, when we do that connections, Keith, once we get further along, I'd like to see what kind of connection, what material, what it looks like when we get into doing those tie-ins to connect. I want to know what size pipe, what, is it ductile? Do we have it, you know, traced right, whatnot, is it, is it coated, is it plasticked up or whatever? Because that's going to tell us and determine honestly the life of that. And it may, ductile if it installs correctly, it'll be there a hundred years. But if, if we're having issues already or concerns around it, and then we start talking about what you're saying in the homeowners association, how many are we affecting? What are the, what are the potential risks we're going to have for that group and it being in that area? Because it's interesting, it's, it's interesting for me that the MPW does not want to take that ownership on it. And I wonder why.
Does that service just that subdivision, or does it go on up the road to the others?
Just that one and some places across the road from that.
The, right across the road, they're on the block. And the, the subdivisions further out there, are those all on public wells?
Yes. Community water supply, they're not owned by public, community.
Community water supplies, so they go under the DNR?
Yes.
Public well, whatever, you know, and I, you know, there's unfortunately a lot of those around and with water quality and water things we see coming, I think those are going to be more and more difficult situations in the county that we have to deal with.
This, this one's being fed by MPW.
Yes.
It's not owned by MPW, which is just scratches my head in a sense.
The amount of risk that the homeowner group has is, is tremendous.
Yeah, well, that, that's why I think it's good for us to, to, you know, when we start doing this project, let's do our due diligence, we can, we can look, I, we can see that and then find out the condition of that pipe and then share that with that homeowner's group as well, too.
Hundred percent that it's a family utility.
Yeah, currently, I, in the conversations that I had with MPW, it seems that they're not.
I'll bet they're not.
They're not wanting to jump on the ownership of it.
Bottom line is, it's always, it's a matter of money. It always comes down to money. And, and, you know, you've probably long heard me on this board say, you know, when I know we've done this, you know, if we permit things and, and we have engineering specs, which I know we have in several of these divisions out there, I believe we're taking on an obligation. And our obligation is to make sure that it was, one, put into those specifications, and, and two, it's done properly. And, and I know that hasn't always happened, and that, that kind of burns me, quite frankly, because if we're taking the money, we're taking the permit, we ought to do the work. And, and we have an obligation there, I believe, or the, I think government has an obligation when they say to us, to an individual, I'm taking a fee to make sure this is done properly. And when it becomes a burden, I think that, you know, we own a part of that. But you have the obligation, you also have the responsibility of... Right. You know, and we've been gladly taking these taxes all these years.
You bet.
And then paying service fees and all of that, so. I know it's a difficult situation, I wish we weren't in it, but we are. So we'll have to figure out how to get, poor Keith, gets in the middle of them all, all right. So I'll be curious to see where that's, where that ultimately heads.
I do not have any other questions.
Thanks Keith.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight, planning and zoning administrator Eric Frost. Good morning, Eric.
Morning. Hi, I'm just asking, do you approve a resolution granting extension for filing of the subdivision plat, final plat for Shady Cedar subdivision? It was a one-lot agricultural subdivision, well, that's, for one reason or another, they failed to get it recorded within the allotted timeframe, so prescribed in our code is to file for an extension, pay the broker fee, which they've done. They're asking you to grant the extension for recording. Nothing changes. The plat was approved by zoning commission, a few folks, they just didn't get it recorded.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Santos, question for Eric. I don't have a problem with this per se, I just want to make sure we're acting correctly. The application has to be made within the ninety-day approval period, correct?
If they, they have to pay a fee if it's made after that, there's a fee associated with it. I think there's two separate processes.
Just look at it, approval of final plat, blah, 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 being null and void. If it's not recorded within ninety days after the approval, unless an application for an extension is made during said ninety-day period, a request for extension after the ninety-day period will be in writing and have a fee set by the board. So you're saying it doesn't, you can blow the ninety-day deadline and not record the plat and not request an extension in the ninety days, the only consequence is after that you have to pay a fee.
Is that correct, is that the way, did you just, yeah, I believe that's the?
Yeah, I, yep.
Yeah, I think we do, I think that...
Just making sure.
When this original thing came up, it said, if you need longer to do it, you, you go ahead and file for an extension and there's no really fee for the extension, it's just when you let the ninety days last as far as the fee for that extension. Because we have to go back through some proceedings.
Which, yeah, which I get, it's just, it's weird, most deadlines I occur, you have to ask for the extension within the deadline period. But my concern is with the approval being null and void, so it's really not null and void, it's at some later point they file an extension request.
Correct.
So when would it ever actually, I mean, it's a legal question maybe, but when would it ever actually be null and void? Couldn't they just say, well, we haven't filed an extension request yet?
You're right, legal question.
All right, I'm right, but it makes no difference, I'm just curious. Okay, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it is a roll call, then Santos.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I vote aye, Scott?
Aye.
And Doug?
Aye.
Thank you for indulging me.
You got your one.
I have one more time to go.
And item, excuse me, B is one variance that's granted by Board of Adjustment last Friday. This is a variance to allow property owner to build a detached accessory structure in what would be considered the front yard space. It would still be at least fifty feet back. This was a unique shaped lot on Hundred Twenty-two East near Fairport, where the driveway comes in at a very strange angle. There was an existing building there that is being torn down, so it's essentially replacing. So it, it doesn't change the characteristic of the neighborhood, I mean, the board felt that it was a reasonable request. There were steep slopes in other areas of the lot that could possibly accommodate. They felt that was the unique limiting factor, the great hardship, so they granted variance for that.
Jeff is moved, Jeff is seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, this is not a roll call vote, it looks like, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, it is passed. Anything else, Eric?
I believe that's all, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine, discussion of possible action to approve a renewal application for a Class C beer, Class E liquor license and Sunday sales permit for Rife Oil Company, DBA Stewart Road Fast Break at twenty-four eighteen Stewart Road, Muscatine, Iowa five-two-seven-six-one.
Move, approve, second.
Scott is moved, Jeff is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Item ten, discussion of possible action to approve a renewal application for Class C native wines, Sunday sales permit and outdoor service permit for Arden Creek Vineyard and Winery LLC, DBA Arden Creek Vineyard and Winery, twenty-three ninety-one Independence Avenue, Lexington.
Move, approve, second.
Jeff is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
One question on some of this stuff.
Yep.
Do we ever utilize any testing on some of these that go out to check for underage buying compliance?
That's a state thing, isn't it?
Well, no, we do it in the city.
Do you?
Yeah, I mean, basically.
I think the sheriff's office has...
We normally try to do it in the city, I think, once, twice a year.
I know the sheriff does, does, I know they do it for buying cigarettes, I guess, I'm not sure if they do it for this as well.
That way, and then, you know, once they do have a, out of compliance, then there's a fee associated for the renewal. And I'm just looking at these as renewals, and I was just wondering if that's something that we want to at least request that we're doing to stay in compliance? If you could follow up with that, Nancy?
I can.
Thank you.
Eleven is discussion of possible action to approve the amended minutes of the August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting.
Move, approve, second.
Santos is moved, Jeff is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twelve, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting.
Move, approve, second.
Jeff is moved, Santos is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Correspondent Santos.
The only thing I had was just in regards to a meeting that we had in, we had talked a while back to recycling in regards to that and in the presentation that we had with Dave Pop last week, he had mentioned that their recycling is getting reviewed as well. And we had had a conversation with him at the Solid Waste a couple of weeks back. I still want him to schedule something for us to do as a presentation, but the, the city is evaluating different proposals, looking at different ways of trying to accommodate the recycling, because they also see there's a need, and I think that would be an opportunity for us as a county board to maybe jointly work with them. One of the conversation pieces was putting the recycling containers over in the, into the area where they do the drop off of the leave and the mulch and, and wood. And put that in an area that's a controlled environment where we're going to actually have staff from the city, you know, looking at people that are coming in. And so if that way, we can say, okay, you're in, you're in the county, you're in the city, here's, here's a sticker or an ID or some sort, we're looking at that type of way. And, and, and then you can come in and drop off your recycled goods. Because we're, we're basically believing that there's also out of, you know, out of state, out of areas that are dropping off piles of wood. And there was a, a trial of dropping off some recyclable containers in Washington storage area, just out there on Washington Street. And within one weekend, that thing just got overwhelmed and basically abused in a sense, too. So the, the, the request that I have is, is we're going to see if, if Nathan can submit something to Dave Pop, have him come out, we'll schedule something with Nancy to have him be here. And I think that's, there's an opportunity that I think I'd like to look at, because there's containers that they have that Republic provides. To be able to get a container that, like we have right here down the road here in the city, right on the fourth or on, yeah, I think it's between third and fourth right there. There are actually Republic containers that have a slot that's only about maybe six inches to eight inches wide or in depth, and then, and then it's like four or five feet wide overall. So you basically have to break the box down to submit them in those, in those containers just out here in the road. Republic has a fee for those types of containers, but if maybe the county would be, you know, wanting to work with the city and say, hey, we'll pitch in some money to help you get these containers, and then obviously that allows a joint effort between the city and the county. It's overseen by the city, and then maybe we can come up with a way of still accommodating the county's needs from recycling. And then it'll kind of hit two birds with one stone, working together. Don't know the costs around that, but I think that's something that I would like to have that conversation with Dave.
You know, I think this is, you know, this is kind of a complex issue, because as you recall, you know, we had, when we, when the services were stopped by the city and down the south end there, you know, I had numerous people from, actually outside of Muscatine County indicate that they were frequent users of those. And they would be willing to pay a fee to help with continued support. And so I think we have to think about West Liberty, you know, all the smaller communities, too, what kind of services may be available and how that might be. And I know the city's challenges with the ones on the south, because, you know, I, it's down by my business. We used it frequently for our cardboard recycling, and what always frustrated me was most people do not break their cardboard down. And anybody that does deals with cardboard knows that, you know, if you break it down, you get fifty times more in one of the same space.
And it was really basically the comment that when, when I had the conversation at the Solid Waste meeting with Dave, was that, you know, hey, we, we have really no issues when, with the container that's right down here on Third Street, because it's actually has the slot that you can't just throw in a big box. It has to be broke down to get used, and this is, and it gets really filled up, and it's like a twenty-yard dumpster, you know? So if we, if we were to probably come up with some sort of options, I think that would be good from our perspective to look at saying, hey, well, let's work together, let's see if we can jointly do, it's overseen, it's in a controlled environment, so basically you'd only be able to go there between probably eight and five P M to drop off boxes. It's not something out of hours, but it's, it's possibly something that we can utilize and still...
Is there still a market for the product, or?
No, I don't, I, that's something I don't know, I think we'll have to have Dave talk about those things, I'm not aware of those issues yet, or where they're at.
But I, but I will say that, you know, for the general resident, that, you know, if we can avoid having to do another cell in the landfill or do anything with a landfill, it's worth significant dollars to us, because, you know, landfills are getting more and more difficult to manage and maintain. And, and our landfill, you know, we want to extend its life as long as we can.
With, with the proposal that they're trying to do is trying to help in, in management of, of the amount of tree trimmings and, and all the, all the, the wood that's getting put in. And basically, that's how we started kind of saying, well, wait a minute, what if we were to try to do the recycling in the same type of a time, in, in the same type of an area? Because we're going to have a person there managing all of the, the stuff coming in for the, for somebody that, you know, so you cut a tree down and you want to go drop off all your stumps and everything, or, or major, you know, pieces of wood, the city will take that, but as long as you're a city resident, living in the city, you're going to be allowed to do that. The system's still not perfected, we just had a discussion on that, but that's how I brought in, you know, me thinking about the recycling as well, too, because we had a conversation about the issues that we're getting abused there in Washington. So in a, kind of a long, long-winded answer, but that's basically what I had in correspondence that I wanted to bring up as far as I'm concerned.
Where does, where does this cardboard go, if there's no market, and?
So Republic has, has a, of, of their own system, and I don't know as far as where the recycling goes. I mean, they were paying for, with them, but, but I'm just saying there's not near as much as a market I think there was in demand five years ago.
Are we just putting it in someone else's landfill? Are we just putting it in someone else's landfill?
That's a good question that we could have today. I mean, I, again, those are things that I would want to have Dave, the, the solid waste manager himself, be able to answer those. And I think he would have those answers. I, I'm just more around requesting that we as a, as a board, request Dave to come in here, talk to us. And then we talk about that potential of that recycling and maybe as a board, come up with a cost associated with that and share that and maybe work with the city to come up with some options that we can try to help to alleviate the recycling needs that we have in the county.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's bring him in.
Okay.
Yeah, we had already talked about that letter and that'll get written in to go out.
If we can officially get him on the schedule in the next week or so. That's all I have.
Uh, nothing to note.
Same here. I had no correspondence. Jeff? How about committees?
No committee meetings, just documents, options.
Um, on the twenty-seventh, uh, had the Region Nine Transportation meeting. That's all I had. On the, I want to say it was Thursday, no, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, we had by-state commission up in Quad Cities. Jeff?
Yeah, the Region Nine on the twenty-seventh and the by-state commission on the twenty-eighth. Santos?
I had no clues.
Brian, I see your itch in there, so vote at number fifteen, uh, receive information from county employees.
Good morning. Just have an announcement to make. Uh, Musketeen County is currently in the process of updating its multi-juridicial hazard mitigation plan. As part of the process, members of the public are invited to attend either of the following meetings. Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand nineteen at six thirty P M at the West Liberty Public Library, four hundred North Spencer Street in West Liberty. There's also going to be one Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, four thirty P M at the Musketeen Community College, Larson Hall, room sixty-two. That's the Musketeen Access Nine video studio. The address is one fifty-two Colorado Street in Musketeen. These meetings offer the public a chance to learn more about the update process for a plan or ask questions about the kinds of hazard mitigation strategies it might include and provide input that can be used in a planning process. Updating the plan enables jurisdictions within Musketeen County to remain eligible for certain pre-disaster project funds through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have anything for Brian?
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, any other county employees? Okay, item number sixteen, uh, sixteen A is discussion and possible action to approve the resolution zero nine zero nine one nine zero two, authorizing and approving a loan agreement and providing for the issuance of a one point eight five million dollar general obligation county building improvement note and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
I, I will want, I do want to note that there's a typo there, the resolution is actually oh nine nineteen, nineteen oh two.
So there shouldn't be two oh nines?
No, there should be two nineteen's.
Oh, okay, very good. All right.
I'll move to approve.
Jeff has moved and approved, or Jeff has moved to approve, Scott has seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? I would just note, it looks like we got a good interest rate at three point three percent, ten-year term on this, so it's pretty favorable. Taking advantage of those low interest rates. And this is for the community building or the, uh, the, uh, not community, but the maintenance building we will be building, uh, at Fifth and Mulberry. Any further discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote, Santos?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I vote aye, Scott?
Aye.
And Doug?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Nancy, when do we, we're out for bid on that, was, was there a bid opening on that, like?
The, the bids are due Thursday, I believe, by ten A M. And then the intent would be to bring those to you guys, I believe, next Monday.
Did, do you know, did we get quite a few people hold plans or looked like?
I have no idea.
The meeting was well attended, that there was a walk-through, quite a few.
There was quite a few people to walk through.
So good. It's always good.
We have, the, we, the architect deals with all the, the issuing the plans for people, so I can't speak to that.
Item sixteen B is action to accept the August twenty nineteen payroll claims.
No, do approve.
Second.
It has been moved, uh, by Jeff, seconded by Santos, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other items with the admin office, Nancy?
Um, I do not have anything else.
Okay, tomorrow is the rededication ceremony?
Yes, tomorrow's the rededication ceremony at four P M. And then the Farm Bureau Annual Meeting. Um, I believe the dinner's at six thirty and then the meeting starts at seven.
That's the West Liberty Community Center, correct?
Yes.
All right, anybody else have anything? All right, folks, thank you much, we are.